Calling a meeting to order. Is everyone on? Everyone here?
We're all here.
Call meeting to order. Welcome, everybody in Zoom land. Here we are again and have a number of items on the agenda tonight. Most importantly, we have a very comprehensive report from Chazen, which was sponsored by Highlands Land Trust and Michelle Smith, who is with us tonight, and she can introduce everyone that worked on this. But before I give it over to her, this is a, you know, we went over this before and then it was finalized and it's a really, it's a really a great job that was done here. And so I'd like to thank all of you for the time and effort was put into it. It's really going to be beneficial, I think, to the village and it was very important to have it done. So, thank you so much, Michelle and Highland Land Trust. And with that, I'll give this over to the floor to Michelle. And as I said, you can introduce the people that worked with you on this and we'll go through the report.
Okay, great. Well, thanks. Thanks a lot, Dave, and hi, everyone. So I just give you a little bit of background. We originally, if you remember, a couple of years ago, when we could still meet in person, we came to the village board and we talked about getting some, getting a grant from the DEC through the Land Trust Alliance to study water, both water quality and quantity and land use issues in relation to water for the Cold Spring Water Supply, as well as some important streams in the town of Phillips Town. We received that funding in 2018 and we continued a project in 2018, 19, and 20, where we have already looked at water quality, but we also, we thought a lot about quantity, water quantity supply versus demand, particularly for the village of Cold Spring Water Supply. And the reason for that is because a lot of people had sort of raised concerns about, you know, if additional developments come online, what does that mean for demand versus the supply that we have in the village? And we know that when we go through drought for several months, you know, we face voluntary water restrictions as we have in a few years of the past decade, and then less frequently have gone on to the New York City Aqueduct as a backup water supply. And with climate change, then, you know, there could be an increased frequency of droughts. And so we just thought that was a really interesting thing to look at. As we know, Beacon, the city of Beacon, facing some development pressure, also did a water study and made some changes based on that. And so we engaged Chazen. We spoke to Russell Urban Mead, who's on from Chazen and is going to give us an introduction to the work that they did. So Russell Urban Mead is on, as well as George Kronk, to look at, they're both from Chazen, to look at the supply, how much supply do we actually have versus the demand? And also the projected demand, what if all of the parcels in Cold Spring got developed? What does that mean for demand? And then they went a step further and said, well, if, you know, if you might be facing some increased demand in the future, or you face drought, i.e. the supply side goes down, what are some additional things you could look at in terms of the reservoirs we already have? There is a supplemental mysterious supply called the Jaycocks Pond that the village also has access to. And there's also, you know, possibility of wells, which is what the village has looked at before. So they looked at all of that and tried to quantify both the amount of water and the expense of any of those solutions. I think that's very helpful. And I do want to particularly thank Marie and Jeff for all of the work that they did as we tried to reconcile numbers and work on the build out, made sure that the build out numbers made sense. And I also have a couple of other colleagues from the Hudson Highlands Land Trust who are on as well tonight. So I think Katrina and Ashley are on, so just wanted to mention that. But with that, I will let Russell take it away. And he and/or George to speak about their findings. But I think also, they're just really, hopefully, people have had a chance to read the report and they'll be very interested to see what sort of questions or observations you have. So Russell?
Yeah, thanks, Michelle, and thanks, everybody. We're really pleased to be here this evening. And as, Michelle, you have said so well, there have been many people who helped us be successful and pulled together critical information. And Michelle, thanks so much to the Hudson Highlands Land Trust for engaging us for this work and to the village for making us feel welcome. The report is a little bit lengthy and we thought it might be useful if we just run through the high, the high points of it quickly and then just open up for discussion. And at the end of the day, I'm a hydrogeologist. What I love is finding water and providing water. But it's only useful if it gets in the pipe and gets into your home. And so my good colleague, George Kronk, is the engineer who thinks about the complications of getting it to you. And so he and his team really took the lead on the analysis of demand. And then he and I thought together about how to make up the supply quest, responses. So it seemed appropriate for me to turn this over to George and have him work through, work us through the high points of the report and then we'll join you together and talk about the supply options. So with that, George?
Yep. Thank you, Russell. And again, thank you, everyone, for having this great opportunity to work on this particular project. I enjoy working on these. This is something that a lot of communities don't do. They just kind of do something and it's not necessarily thought out very well. So I enjoy being part of this part of the process because I think in the long run, it will benefit your community much better. So we're going to talk a little bit about demand first. And demand is established a couple of different ways in New York State. One way is you can look at the books and see how much usage of actually, you've actually produced or drawn from your different users that you have right now. And of course, the second way is you can go look in in guides that the state sets up to establish potential demands. So these demands will be a little bit of both because we have very good records provided by your water operator for the information he was able to find to help support the demands. And you guys are currently using about 260,000 gallons per day of water. That seems like a lot, but it's really not for your community because your water treatment plant, or filtration plant, I should call it, is around 800,000 gallons per day. So in some ways, you have some capacity that you could expand upon. But we're going to talk about other demands and other sources here in a minute. We looked very closely, as Michelle mentioned, at the different properties that have not been developed at this point and a handful of properties that probably could get redeveloped. Maybe they're a little bit larger in size right now and without significant use changes. And we're not talking about, you know, adding 20-story skyscrapers or any, you know, large demands of that nature, but really sticking with the zoning that you currently have and the way you guys have, you know, guided your town to develop the way it's been developed so far. So you have about a 50,000 gallon per day increase that we calculated that you could come up with. So you're around 310,000 gallons per day is really kind of the benchmark we looked at for your, for your community. So again, from a filtration point of view, you certainly could provide that. But we're going to get into talking about your actual supplies and maybe your distribution a little bit here. In the supply component, I'm going to talk about three reservoirs. I'm going to refer to them as the upper reservoir, the lower reservoir. Some people may call that the middle reservoir. And then what I call the Foundry Brook Reservoir, and some people may call that the lower reservoir, or the lower reservoir. So upper, lower, and foundry is hopefully the easiest way for most folks to remember this. And we'll move forward with that. So between your upper to your upper and middle and lower reservoir, you guys are holding approximately 65 million gallons of water. This is roughly eight months of supply for the entire village right now. So that's a pretty good amount to have in reserve. The upper reservoir itself holds about 35 million of those gallons. And the reason I'm going to bring this up is, is in the upper reservoir, as of right now, the relief valve is difficult to operate. In fact, it's questionable if it's operational because the concern is if we open the valve or the village opens the valve, I'm not sure we can close the valve. So it's kind of a one-shot of a lot of your water, over half of your water. So you're really using the balance of your middle or your lower reservoir and the Foundry Brook Reservoir. And that is creating, I think, some challenges for water operations. And I think it's causing you to consider how much of that lower reservoir you really draw down. And currently, you're only drawing about 30% of that water down because, again, if you hit a significant drought period, you want to have this supply, you know, unlike maybe a well source, so you can turn a pump on. You know, if it doesn't rain for a month or two, you don't get to refill or recharge your reservoir system. And just for quick numbers, the Foundry Brook Reservoir holds about a day worth of supply. So it's not a serious contributor, but it is a great place to allow for a little bit of settling prior to entering into your filtration system. We have a couple of recommendations we want to go through on the project. We did not spend, let me just back up one second. We did not spend a lot of time looking at the condition of your pipes throughout your system. We could certainly look into that into the future, but that really wasn't the purpose of this study here. It wasn't, you know, we didn't video every inch of pipes and run and test every valve out there. Rumor has it, like everybody's infrastructure, it could use some improvement. So at some point, you may want to know, you know, a little bit more detail as to what parts of that system would be, to be improved or replaced. The recommendations that we have are based upon a couple of scenarios that we want to, that we want to look at. Right now, you're more or less operating with about a two-month supply. So again, that's about a 30% draw on your lower reservoir. So if we start hitting extended drought periods, and drought periods often happen in the, you know, typically, everybody thinks about the summer, but they can also happen in the winter. So if we, if we do have colder winters, everything freezes up and it really doesn't flow anywhere for a period of time. And you'll actually see your reservoirs drop significantly. And if you've ever driven up to like the Ashokan or something, it's a massive reservoir system, you can see the ice drop, you know, 10, 15 feet in the winter months up there. So again, depends on the climate, depends on the year, but always be thinking, without any rainfall, you've got about a two-month window that you're operating in. And that's, that's a stressful situation for your water operator, you know, his job obviously is to deliver that water every day. So it puts him in a precarious situation and he's often having to make decisions based upon that knowledge. The other source that we want to talk a little bit about was the DEP. The DEP has made offers for water connections. They've done certainly some work in your neighborhood to possibly allow for some of that. And our experience is that the DEP water is very good quality water, but it comes at a price. So, you know, we do work with the DEP. I will disclose that. So, you know, I'm not going to say negative things here, but it certainly comes at a price. And they certainly can put restrictions on your usage as you move forward. On top of that, the DEP, if you were to use the DEP water supply or think that you're going to use it on a daily basis, they want to ensure that you actually have true backup water sources. So in theory, they are your second source, right? So for your water operator, that's a great option as an emergency backup situation, but probably not something you want to plan on for a daily basis usage, right? So we did go through and look at the supplies and the volumes, and we did come up with a handful of recommendations. And I wanted to just run through those very quickly because I think we want to probably focus most of our efforts on that. We can certainly go back and talk about any of the numbers in the report. But I think that the recommendations is most likely where the board would want to understand where if and what type of actions you might want to take in the future. So obviously, one of the first recommendations would be to fix the upper reservoir. And I'm going to put a caveat on that because when we get down through some of these other options, you may, that may not be your only solution. We understand that you guys have started looking into this. This could be a $4 to $5 million endeavor. That's real money. We understand that. And, you know, that will take a long time to get to that point to do a, to do a true reservoir repair project. As, you know, it's typically a five to 10-year process to get through that cycle. We've certainly done many reservoir dam projects and repairs and, you know, they, they're lengthy, you know, to say the least. So one of the things that you could do is to alleviate that is you could draw more water out of your lower reservoir, more than that roughly 30% right now. But again, it puts the water operator in a precarious position because if you do end up running into a drought period and he's been drawing down heavily upon that, then you're going to have possibly trucking water or something in the future or consider opening the upper dam for that one-time release. So one of the other options that we suggested in the report is the use of flashboards. And we say that very nonchalantly right now. There's a little background work that goes into putting in flashboards. It certainly doesn't mean that, you know, you can send your DPW crew out there tomorrow and start hammering in boards around the edges. There is the efforts of looking at the ownership of the lands around the reservoir. There's often a legal discussion that circulates around that. And then, of course, you want to ensure that the structures that we're going to be adding the water boards to is adequate for holding that additional capacity. In theory, they should be able to. Most dams are designed to handle that. So again, you might want to not look at all the reservoirs, maybe one or two of the reservoirs as an option. In general, water boards is good value for installations. We've recommended that on several other projects. Some municipalities move on pretty quickly to do something like that. And it's a great option, you know, after the winter freeze to set up for that little bit of extra storage or, you know, that you can get out of that. That type of a project, you know, in your head, you could be thinking around $150,000 is that type of a project cost. And again, several of these items are laid out inside the report here. Another item that we have looked at, we've actually looked at a couple of different ways over different periods of time, actually, is diverting the Jaycocks Pond stream into your reservoir system. There would be some permitting involved in that. You know, the DEC likes to opine upon diverting water flows from various stream sources. And you also need to be aware that that stream does not run year-round. So again, it will, it will help lengthen your season or abilities to draw water from there, but it's not going to be a permanent source, you know, like some streams that run year-round. Another option that we actually spent, Russell and I spent a good deal talking about, and when we get into a conversation, I would like to spend a little bit more time talking with this about you guys, is the use of wells. I like wells from an engineering point of view because they provide a consistent and generally predictable water quality source, you know. Surface water requires filtration. It requires a very heavy oversight of your watershed. Typically, you need a very, you know, involved set of restrictions around that as far as how much development stuff you have. And certainly, Michelle can speak to some of those other efforts. But I like wells because, you know, if you start getting, say, you know, 100, 200 gallon per minute flows out of some sources or maybe even more, that can really offset a good amount of water for a community like yours. You know, for an example, if you had an average demand of 300,000 gallons per day, which is roughly what we think your build out would be, that's about a 200 gallon per minute worth of well source to come up with that. So it's, it's a very achievable goal. And most people think that you need these massive, huge well systems. And quite honestly, you don't. And, you know, a lot of these communities, you know, we're not, we're not in New York City, so we're not providing millions of gallons per day. So these well sources are a great option. To look into those options, you want to consider either bedrock wells or overburdened or sand and gravel type wells. You do have obviously the option for both of those in and around your community. And we can get a little bit more into that discussion down the road. And then, you know, consider maybe hooking up those wells at some point and then getting into construction. But realistically, you want to do a little bit of a feasibility analysis on that. And again, I don't know what other studies you guys have done in the past, but, you know, strongly suggest the usage of wells here. And then, of course, we're always big fans of water conservation. It, you know, I'm the kind of person that I like to leave my grass a little bit longer so I'm not mowing it and having to water it every day, especially in the summer months. You know, I don't necessarily time my showers, but in general, you know, you know, water usage is an important part of this. I've seen a lot of communities reduce their water by a good 10, 15% if they have a good water conservation program in place. In general, you know, again, I mentioned earlier, we work with the DEP on water supply projects. They've actually seen over the last 10 to 15 years about a 20, 25% reduction in water usage, even though obviously the size of New York has not diminished at all. And that is simply because of water conservation efforts that they've done, whether it's, you know, encouraging the installation of newer fixtures or, you know, not turning on water hydrants and irrigation systems when you don't really need it or even thinking about, you know, the types of vegetations that you're using throughout the, throughout the city. So again, they have, they have their own program. I'm not suggesting that Cold Spring adopt that program. But it is a great method to help curb some of that usage. And oftentimes, just that simple education helps a community understand, you know, their resources a little bit better. You know, just a couple of things real quick. We can certainly talk about them is, you know, aging infrastructure is always, always, always a concern for every community. So some of these options, like, for instance, the wells, sometimes can tie very nicely back in with maybe replacing some water maids and stuff depending on where those wells are located. And, you know, that's often a benefit to trying to think, you know, more globally on water supply projects instead of very focused on individual, you know, short-term demand needs. You know, one of the things we did talk about was possibly putting wells up near the Clove Creek area. It's certainly outside the vicinity of the, of the village itself. And the reason I like that project location, and Russell has a completely different set of reasons, is if you have projects that involve multiple communities, so if you were to put something in that location up there and then share some of those resources with the town and the village, your ability to get grant funding and certainly low-interest loans or whatever methods you're going to use to pay for this stuff or bonding it increases drastically. So if you're the only community looking for something and you're not necessarily economically challenged or there isn't an immediate order, consent order or something in your community, you're, you score very low on the, on the grant system process. And I'm sure you guys have worked grants before. So if you can get into a situation where you're helping multiple villages and a town and stuff, it just, it ratchets you guys up there very quickly for opportunities. And certainly, I'm not going to promise anything, but, you know, certainly seen the scoring enough to know that that helps. I'd love to open this up to discussions. I don't know if Russell wants to talk a little bit about Clove Creek or anything else about the wells?
I love talking about wells, but I think we should come up for questions. As you've said, there are opportunities for bedrock wells in close proximity to your reservoirs and maybe on state land if you could cut a deal. And then the sand and gravel opportunities would be along the Clove Creek somewhere, which, because that's where the sand and gravel is. With those comments, we should open it up.
Okay, I'll fire a few at you. The, just, we've talked, you talked briefly about the valve for, at the upper dam, not being able to use that. How difficult is it to just repair that valve and so that we have access to that water?
Mayor, if I can interrupt for a little sentence, we actually did go out and exercise that valve and we've been utilizing it since the original meeting. So it is, and it holds fairly well. So we have been utilizing it over the past month.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Arguably, that relieves a lot of stress.
Right.
It leaves you only with whatever your compliance obligations are related to that reservoir, which I understand you're also already addressing.
Tempting. Yep.
Next, tapping into Jaycocks, how does that affect the pond itself? Or do we, is it, do you tap in before it or after the pond itself into the stream, then divert it? Or how does that actually work?
Let me jump in on this one. I, the idea that, that here is in fact one that you can go down to Byram Reservoir and look at in Westchester County. Byram Reservoir has a number of tributaries that flow into it. Immediately downstream of the dam, there's another stream that flowed into the downstream area. And somebody, a long time ago, built a little diversion on that stream and a kind of a causeway that follows around the hillside and drops the water in right at the head of the dam. So it's a ground flow of the stream that otherwise would have flowed into the stream below the dam. So it's, it's a bit of capture magic that is all done with a diversion that follows around the hillside. And it's totally fascinating. And if you go down to that Byram Reservoir and park on the side of the road right near the dam, you can go and look at it. And I really encourage you to do it because it is unbelievably simple and sort of, it's, what do they say? It's high concept, low tech. It's cool. So to answer your question, it would not affect Jaycocks Pond at all. It would affect the stream that flows naturally down, down the road there. And just in the last several hundred feet before that stream flows into Foundry Brook, you would just intercept that flow and rather than, you would then feed it into Foundry Brook Reservoir as a gravity flow. And as George said very well, at times like this time of year, there's probably no flow there. But during the spring and the fall, there would be a hearty flow and it would allow you to delay your use of either of the upper reservoirs because you'd have this contributing flow.
And right now, I'm not familiar with the stream coming out of Jaycocks. It can be easily tapped into. Is there property that's involved that's not ours? Or is it?
Well, we haven't surveyed it, but you have a really neat shaped piece of property. The piece of property is a bit like a V and it kind of catches land extending up both watersheds a little bit. And so when I did hike around there, not knowing exactly where the property line is and looked at elevations, that diversion that we would need to build and the cause, the sluice way that would then run it around the shoulder of the hill and into the reservoir, looks like it could all be done on municipal land.
Well, just to be clear, though, Russell, in case we went before that, that parcel where the pond is is actually owned by state parks, but...
That's true for the pond, but where the diversion would be built.
Oh, okay, is the village, okay, good.
Correct. So you wouldn't have to touch anything related to Jaycocks Pond. You would be just talking with the DEC about doing a project on municipal land at the very low end of the Jaycocks stream that would have already long since left Jaycocks Pond. And you would just pick up the flow, wrap it around the hillside and drop it, drop it into your reservoir.
I have a question about that. How does the DEC feel about those kind of projects? It seems like they don't like to mess with natural watersheds very much. What would the, what would that require, do you think, just?
You know, you don't know until you ask. The Byram Reservoir diversion probably took place before regulations. So I, you know, I don't know if there's a track record there. It's clearly that, that little segment below Jaycocks Pond before it flows into Foundry Brook is not a drought stream. It does, it certainly isn't a DEC wetland. You know, the hurdles to the diversion are much lower than it would be if it was a special habitat. I, you know, the, the way I would approach it is I would, I would set up a pre-application meeting with the DEC and said, this is what we'd like to do. And if they blow you down, back away. But my, my guess is that they'd be open to it.
Well, that, is that stream naturally, it's been dammed at that point where we own the pond itself, right? That's not a natural pond, is it?
Well, the Foundry Brook Dam is obviously built, but the Jaycocks stream flows naturally through the ravine there and...
Right. But, but where it's, where it retains where the pond is, is that, that's a man-made... But but where it's where it retains where the pond is, is that that's a manmade object, right?
And that's on state land, as Michelle pointed out, and I
The village and the village has rights to the water. But but that the stream, the the stream Jay Cox, the stream coming out of Jay Cox Pond is just the overflow over a very old manmade dam.
Well, they may be interested in getting rid of that, right? Isn't the D E C in the practice of removing dams that are no longer necessary or?
D E C is in the practice of talking about removing dams.
I thought something like that, yeah.
Yeah, it it's just very costly. And they are prioritizing dam removal funds for dams that are in close proximity, like the first and second dam on the Hudson, so that they can get some benefit for eel migration and and other anadromous fish migration. I suspect a very small headwater dam pretty far up will be low on their list to remove.
Well, maybe that my point is that maybe we could offer to to do that for them and they let us divert the stream a little earlier than it would normally join the Foundry Brook.
Fantastic idea.
Okay.
A few questions on wells. What's the I'll fire off in a special order here. The the average, I know it depends on the depth and whatever, but the average gallons per minute from a well? And how much land is needed per well or how far apart do they have to be?
So George did a good job pointing out that there are bedrock wells and sand and gravel wells. The Hudson Highlands are not highlands for no reason. They're, as you well know, very hard, very resistant to weathering. They've been there a long time. And so statistically, the yield from bedrock wells, which are dependent on fractures, aren't great. And because the very things that have kept the mountains up are also the things that don't let the water into the rock. So bedrock wells, it is quite possible, if you are fortunate with your well drilling, to intercept a couple of good fractures, to have wells that might, I would say a good bedrock well in in in, you know, near you is likely to be in the range of 15 to 25 gallons a minute. That may sound like nothing, but when your goal is 200 gallons a minute, you actually you can, you know, a good well like that is 10 or 15 or 20% of your demand. That's pretty neat. So it's both good and bad news. The advantage of thinking about bedrock wells is that they can be placed on the land that you own. You could put one in the middle of the piece of property where the water treatment plant is. You could put, you might be able to sneak one in around the perimeters of the reservoirs, for example, and then just pump right into the reservoir to sort of top them up. So there are a bunch of options to answer your question about ownership. Health Department requires for a municipal well, 100 feet of ownership, 200 feet of control. So at a minimum, you have to own 100 foot radius around the well. It's just easier usually to own out to 200 rather than have all sorts of use easements on the second 100 feet. So I tend to think of 200 feet as as just a good planning objective, even though you can split the baby, as I described. The reason that some logic to looking at the Clove Creek aquifer is that sand and gravel wells are prodigious producers by comparison to bedrock formations. You know, a 200 gallon a minute well is entirely plausible. Now, we've 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 put in wells up to 700 gallons a minute in in sand and gravel deposits. It kind of depends on the size of the deposit and the carrying capacity of a watershed. But if there were some pieces of land that one could think about that had at least 200 feet of ownership around them in some proximity to Clove Creek. And, you know, Phillips Town has has its Clove Creek Aquifer map as part of its zoning. If we could find a piece of land and put in a test well or two, it's not unreasonable that a single parcel could produce 200 gallons a minute. And then you just have some choices about how to bring it back. You'd either short pipe it and just dump it into Foundry Brook or run it the whole way. And as George said, you've got such a quality benefit from groundwater that you really don't need the filtration plant. So then there's a cost benefit on on how you how you manage it.
So a couple of follow ups on the the wells, the the distance apart. One would not affect the the production of the other if they were too close. Or is there a distance where they start affecting, you know, production like it?
Oh, if they're too close together, there are multiple straws in a small part of the aquifer.
Kind of asking first question for how far would they have to be? Or is that why they're set up at 100 or 200 feet for that reason or?
No, the 100 and the 200 foot were set up by Health Department as a quality protection measure. I mean, it was sort of a nominal effort at wellhead protection. They they want to make sure that you don't put your well right next to a gas can. You know, they they want you to control the land and the uses within 100 and out to 200 feet confidently. And they would prefer, and in fact, it is just good wellhead protection planning policy to have some degree of 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 management of of the whole recharge area under which groundwater flows towards those wells. But in terms of interfering with each other's yields, bedrock wells will interfere with each other. Usually, it was there if they're 15 to 20 gallon a minute wells and they're more than about 100 or 200 feet apart from each other, they won't have significant interference effects. But closer than that, they're basically two straws in one fracture. They will they will they will pump it down together.
Good. On the the Clove Creek, the only question I have on that is like the the cost to actually pipe that water from that area into our system seems like a lot of hurdles there.
Well, we heard some outstanding news on your behalf today in this call, if the upper if the upper reservoir is functional again. I mean, if you have the ability for the upper reservoir to be used as a source of water to, you know, draw it down. My, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, but it's only the lower one that you want to preserve 30% capacity and for fire protection and sort of ultimate drought protection. So I would think that you've got a $30 million, $35 million, a $35 million gallon storage capacity that you have now brought back online by exercising that valve. And that just gives you an awful lot of room to move now that 30 minutes ago, I didn't know about.
Apologies.
So I I would like to amend something about the Clove Creek component. And, you know, it's been, you know, I've attended many Putnam County Economic Development Opportunities and presentations and stuff. And there's been a folks here probably know better than I do, but there's been a long history of resources invested as say, the other side of the county versus versus the Cold Spring side of the county. And there's, you know, one of the lacking components is there's there is not a significant water system or a sanitary treatment system on this side of the county. And that may be what everybody wants to keep. But, you know, from a community point of view, you know, you've got part of Phillips Town, you got, you know, Nelsonville, and you certainly got Cold Spring that would all benefit from kind of a larger global project. And, you know, I I think at some point that's worth a discussion. You may not need to have that discussion in the short term, you know, if you're focused on on some of these other needs right now. But, you know, it certainly would allow for maybe that change to occur on this side of the county. That's been that's been a challenge.
But would the the Clove Creek, what would that entail regardless? I mean, forget about the costs of it. What would if you tag wells in that area? It seems like we'd have to travel through pipes, I'm assuming, to our system.
Yeah. So there's two ways. So your system is built to treat surface water, which is a higher level or filtration is what we call it, a higher level of treatment than most systems have to do. So if you have a groundwater system, you're typically treating for maybe a little hardness. And then you're just disinfecting. So you're typically adding some amount of chlorine to or hyperchloride or something to to treat that water. And that's it with a with a surface water. You know, outside of managing the the surface area and the and the watershed, you're also doing a filtration process to ensure that you don't have a bacteria or or virus component being added to the water. So it's a it's a more difficult process, more expensive process. And in the long run, it's, you know, it it's it's just a higher level. You have to hold everything too. It doesn't it doesn't produce a better water than a ground well groundwater supply. It just makes the treatment level up to up to the state to meet. So so right now, if your plant is relatively new and your and your treatment system is in great shape, you you know, you'd want to set up your system to take advantage of the fact that it can do surface treatment to some extent. So you would run piping to maybe the beginning point of the system and then let it flow through the stream. It's actually what Peaks Guild does with their reservoirs. You know, they they release their reservoirs in Putnam County. They come down through the hollow brook there. And then they pick it up just before it leaves Corlent. So, you know, they're using the natural stream that was there to do that. And there was certainly a loss to the amount of water that goes through there in that case. But the majority of the water is being picked up, probably 90, 85, 90% of that water. You know, they lose a little bit through infiltration and evaporation. If you if if the quantity of water was becoming more and more of a concern, you might want to hard pipe that all the way to your treatment plant. Then you have no loss of water. But again, that analysis would be done as part of your feasibility study to really know, does it make sense to run that extra length of pipe? Or how many years would it take to pay for that pipe in a sense to make it worthwhile to have that option? You know, water in a pipe is protected, you know? The only bad thing about a pipe is you've got to maintain it, you know? So it's it doesn't last forever. So so at some point it needs replacing. So you'd have to look at each of those scenarios to see where where and if the cost point makes sense.
George, what's the what's the distance from Clove Creek to our water source now?
I have a computer on the side here, so.
I was pulling up Google Earth myself to figure that out. But I there was there was one other thing that I just wanted to say, which is that is I don't remind me, it seems to me that I've heard that there are some maintenance obligations outstanding for your upper reservoir. I don't know whether you have cost quotes for what it costs to do that. That is, you know, it's wonderful that that upper valve is now working. But if you're still looking at some significant dollars to bring that dam into conformance with the dam regulation laws, then any one of these other options, although it might be at 1 million or 2 million to hard pipe from Clove down to the water plant, may be less than bringing that dam into compliance. And that's sort of so that's sort of the the reference point. And if in the short run, the answer is save money and bring water from Clove Creek to the headwater of of the creek and then just let it flow down to the plant. And then in 15 years, as the plant ages, at that point, it may be more cost effective to hard pipe at that point than, you know, do the repairs to the plant. So there may be a timing game in there as well.
I have one last question. Thank you. That was a good answer. Do you have a list of conservation possibilities or brochures? Or where can we tap into that actually, you know, to, you know, send out to residents? Like right now, we don't besides when we start, you know, getting to a drought type situation, we, you know, stop people from watering their lawns. But we've never sent anything out with saying, you know, newer toilets or whatever. Is there a list somewhere or somewhere, something that we can tap into to send out to residents?
Um, I don't have anything left hand, but I can look into that.
Okay, I think that'd be good if there are ways that we can, you know, save considerable amounts of water, as you as you said. For me.
I've got a question. As I was reading through, I believe that I read that, you know, as we add more more water into our system, that our storage tanks are not big enough to handle additional water that we that we can handle about 500,000 gallons. We're talking as we talk about bringing in more water into the system. Is there a need for additional storage tanks? Is that something that is going to be a problem that we need to do and the cost of that?
So you're pretty much in the right zone right now for your storage tank. You more or less want two to three times, there's an exact formula in here and I I forget each detail. You want one time daily operation, one time emergency flow and then one time backup or one and a half times backup. So you're basically looking at about 750 to 900,000 gallons worth of tank storage. Part of that can change because you do have a treatment plant that has pretty good production right now. So it's it's a little bit of a sliding scale that goes on with that. But you're okay right now is the moment. If if you guys were looking at significantly more than what you're at, then you would look at significant changes to your storage system.
And George, you're talking there about additional users of the water system, correct?
Yep.
And not necessarily additional volume going into the water system. But it's a use out of the pipe.
Yeah, the the storage tanks are based on your daily usage and your and your emergency requirements.
Did you get an idea on distance?
I did. You're you're looking at about a half mile from some plausible location along this this Clove Creek, you would drop it into Clove into creek. And you're looking at something like two miles if you were to pipe it the whole way to the water plant.
I have one more question. Could you could you talk, you talked about the flashboards? And you sort of breeze through that, could you get, is that something that's worth us looking into? They were relatively inexpensive. And I don't know if it's something that you think is good for us or not good for us or temporary or or?
George, let me just say one thing about flashboards. It's a fancy word. The way I think of them is that it's a temporary dam on top of your existing dam. So you basically put a little picket fence along the top with boards that can break away over time if there's a massive flood, but you allow yourself to store more water during a good rainfall. So that's what we mean by flashboards.
Right.
George should answer in a more engineering kind of way.
We always view them as good value because it's a lot cheaper to put up a set of flashboards than it is to build an entire structure up higher. If 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 the eventual path for the board is to make the repairs to the upper dam in its entirety and it's $5 million or whatever for that cost, I wouldn't spend any more money on flashboards. But if you were looked at other options and maybe term vision was not to keep that upper dam, which would be a great option, you know, it's very low value or very good value, low cost. If you, you know, if you ended up putting flashboards, say, at the the lower reservoir or the or the or even down by the treatment down by the Foundry Brook, then you know, it it could work out nicely there. There is, and I will say this because, you know, it it becomes a stickler. There are certain property rights for owners and the elevation of water to their property when it when it involves a dam. So I'm not an attorney, so I don't want to speak to that stuff. But don't assume that you can just raise a dam five feet and and you're free to do that for any for any purpose, whether it's flashboards or if you modify your name. We've actually run into that issue on the other way. If you lower dams, sometimes you can run into property right issues as well. So so those things do have to be fleshed out.
George, what are the issues if you lower dam? What are the property rights issues?
Well, some people feel that they've been benefiting from a dam for all these years or a reservoir from all these years. And if you lower it, they feel that they have certain rights to that. And that's a legal argument.
And and that that is what has definitely slowed the momentum to dam removal in the state of New York. Most of it, not on the basis of legal rights, but because of the in the court of public opinion, people just say, hey, listen, I bought this piece of land because I I wanted to look out on that body of water and they make your life miserable. And it has definitely slowed down the removal of dams. On the other hand, your upper reservoir, if there's a big nut there to bring it into compliance and your lower reservoir and some some wells could meet your demand, it might be the better cost equation. it might be the better cost equation. And you could stabilize or uh, decommission the upper reservoir.
Is there a dam that uses flashboards that we could look at? Are they used somewhere locally?
Uh, the village of New Paltz on Upper Reservoir Road, uh, on Mountain Rest Road, excuse me, um, has flashboards on reservoir number four right now. Um, so uh, it's, it's a very small dam, um, but it has a good example of flashboards.
Okay, great. How long would they last, the flashboards? They're not, they're a temporary solution, correct? Uh, like, were we talking a year or five or?
No, five, ten years. The board brought out or they could, if they don't get pulled.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, if you wanted to do a field trip, uh, Byram Reservoir, again, my recollection is that they have flashboards on Byram Reservoir. So you could look at both a sluice way and flashboards with, for one field trip, I think.
Where's Byron Reservoir? Sorry, not. Where, where's the?
Byron Reservoir is the source of water for Mount Kisco.
Okay.
So if you, um, if you if you head down, uh, if you head down Route six eighty-four, and there's an exit for uh, Kisco, and then just use your phone to get you to Byron Reservoir.
Okay.
Byron Reservoir is right along Route uh, eighty-four. So don't envy their quality. They've got a fair amount of salt in their lake.
Any other questions from board?
Our reservoir has been in the news a lot recently.
Because of water quality or?
Um, because somebody very famous owned a big estate very near to it and used it as a tax dodge.
Missed that. Um, at the beginning of the, of your discussion, George, you, you mentioned that our capacity could uh, that we could bring on more whatever building or development. Then you felt confident that we had the ability to do that, but have you thought of that in rate, in relation to like, uh, when we have a really bad drought, maybe worse than we've ever had? Or, or some of them that we've had that were pretty, you know, pretty serious in the last five, ten years where we, we got down pretty low. Um, how would that impact your, your idea that we could actually develop more? Because we were totally dependent on rainfall.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not something you can predict, you know?
So, one thing I've noticed and I have not seen really good studies to date that, that can support this, but just my own observations is, is that I've noticed in the last, um, say, four or five years, significant swings in the way our precipitation has been falling throughout a year. So overall, a year bay appear to have, you know, roughly that forty to sixty uh, inches of rainfall per year. And it on average looks about right. What I've been noticing, and maybe I'm just hyper focused on it more, um, and I haven't seen a good study to this, but um, is that I've seen bigger swings, you know? So if you go back two summers ago, we got, you know, I don't know, twenty, thirty inches of rain from the middle of July through October, you know, I mean, it was a, a very, very wet year for, for most folks. In fact, it killed a lot of crops and, and grass and stuff like that. Um, and then, you know, even this year, um, when we first, when we were reviewing this document, we were in, in a little bit of a drought. We had gone basically a month plus with no precipitation. And not to say that a month is a huge extent, but it, what it, what it is, is we're getting these more volatile swings in, in the precipitation or non precipitation type events. Um, so that brings concern and, and I think to your point, you know, hey, how much water should we have in reservation or, or in our reservoirs? So, I mean, the reality is, is if you can use all of your reservoirs, that eight hundred or that eight month capacity is a very reasonable uh, milestone to be setting um, for that. I mean, that's, that's a lot more than, than many communities have. Um, as an insurance or safety precautions, having a backup source such as the DEP is, is certainly a nice option. My concern is, is that, is that the swings are going to continue. And if something does happen to, to one of your sources of water, you know, um, you know, goes into significant repairs for a period of time or something of that nature. Or, or as we originally thought, the, the valve wasn't going to work anymore, um, without significant repairs. Um, the reason I like wells is, is it, is it, is much less dependent on the immediate rainfall of events. I mean, admittedly, if we have a four or five year drought, wells are going to have their own problems as well. But um, or prolonged stressed uh, environment. So I like the wells because it, it's a more predictable source. And you can usually start seeing the decline if it is going to start declining, so you can start preparing for it. And that, that, and that's really one of the reasons I, I would never recommend to a community to start over with a, with a wealth or with a reservoir system. You know, I would always push for, for, for wells.
And sand and gravel wells are the most stable.
Yeah.
Unwater the nearby fractures and they're, the fractures are not themselves connected to an extensive set of surrounding fractures. Little by little, you'll work them down. But it's pretty tough to pump down the capacity in a bit sand gravel reserve.
Which we have in close enough proximity to, to our system or?
I don't have any, I don't have any reason to doubt the, the capacity of the Clove Creek aquifer uh, further north in Phillips Town, the, what, there are wells there that are used by Duchess County municipalities. And um, uh, it, it's a good sand and gravel reserve. The way we begin any kind of an investigation for a sand gravel well is usually to put together a short menu of possibly uh, acquireable properties, always starting with the, you know, the, the, the willing buyer or the willing seller or a municipal piece of property or some sort of thing like that, where the soils look right uh, based on mapping. And then just go out with um, a GeoPro rig, which is, you know, the most affordable, small diameter core um, rig and spend a couple of days poking around and say, you know, what do we have here? Is it, is it only five feet and then you bounce on rock or is it thirty-five feet and it's good gravel? Uh, and you start making some decisions and winnowing the pool real quickly. Um, and then uh, you make a decision to go forward or not. So there's a, there's a, there's a process to get yourself toward, to, to find a site um, that would support the kind of deal that you'd be looking for. Um, two hundred gallons a minute uh, is, is a, is an achievable number. Um, it, it gets a little scary when you're looking at four hundred or five hundred or more. And that's not what we're looking for here if we're going to go for your average day.
What, what kind of a pipe, what size of a pipe would that be to run, to, to supply that water to our creek?
Three inch, four inch.
Okay, it's not big, it's not big.
Not at all, okay.
The, the total capacity we have is eight hundred thousand, is that, is that correct? Or whatever our total capacity that we're working with, uh, when you draw that down, I think we talked about this a little bit. Um, the, the water that we can actually use, um, you know, once it gets drawn down. I mean, isn't there, like, you're not going to be able to use every gallon of what we have? Or how far down can we drain, you know, the water and still, you know?
Yeah.
Using it.
That's a, that's a good question. Um, so the one thing that is really nice about your reservoir locations is, is it's not overly developed. So there's not sand and, and salt and other components contributing to your reservoirs. So you could draw those down pretty far. I'm not going to say you're going to get every gallon out of them. And certainly, uh, when you get down to the bottom twenty percent, you know, you're going to be replacing a lot more uh, filters and cleaning out stuff. But um, you know, you'll get pretty heavy use of that, you know? I mean, when we say an eight month period, you know, it's, it's rare that you're going to go truly eight months and you've never had any rain event in that, in that eight months, you know? So, um, it, it, you know, it's, it's, it's always subjective to the rainfall of the area. But um, in these wells, or I'm sorry, in these reservoirs, um, you know, I've seen municipalities draw down and they do sediment analysis in their, in their uh, reservoirs and stuff. And, and oftentimes they spend, you know, millions of dollars dredging out their reservoirs and, or, or, you know, and it just isn't adding that much capacity. And, and I would predict that in your reservoirs, you, you know, you might gain three to five percent. You know, if you've never dredged them in a couple hundred years, it's just not enough to make it worth that exercise.
Yeah, they're, they're beautifully wooded reservoir, you know, watersheds, and so they hold a lot of their sediment.
Yeah.
Matt could probably tell us where the low level outlet is. You're not going to be able to lower them below that low level outlet valve.
Yeah. If if the reservoir was designed to take standards, the, the low level outlet, which is kind of the, the sump or bottom, actually protrudes up, you know, five, ten, fifteen feet up from the bottom because you, you don't want those sediments coming out. So that's really as low as it gets. And that's usually not a high volume because it's, it's the bottom of the bowl.
I, the, the, this conversation, I think, has taken a positive turn since, uh, as I say, an hour ago, I didn't know that the upper reservoir could be opened, if it can be. Um, you have a lot more water instantly available than you had until we learned that. Um, so if nothing else, this exercise has provoked that action, which has been super beneficial.
Um, Russell, I think I gathered from Matt, I'm not sure if he's on anymore. I saw that was from, from wastewater on, water wastewater on, but he's not on anymore. Um, I think that was a recent, from what I think he said, it was a recent development after our prior conversation.
Exactly.
Where there was, it hadn't been opened and there was uncertainty whether it could be opened. And now obviously they tried it and it worked.
Yeah, no, I, I feel like this process has been incredibly beneficial because a resource that had not been tested for a while has been brought online. So that's.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, that does ease a lot of the, the pressure on the village, um, in terms of supply. And, and especially as you pointed out, Russell, that, you know, if you're restricting the middle reservoir to thirty percent drawdown, um, there's no need, you, that, you, I don't think the same argument, I think that's what you were saying applies to the upper reservoir, that you could draw it down further.
Right. So that, so then the, then there's just a compliance question. If there's a, I had been led to believe that in addition to the valve, which has now been released, that there is a laundry list of DEC citation issues that was driving an investment in rebuilding the upper reservoir. And if that is correct, I'm going to presume that that obligation is still there. And so whatever that price tag is, becomes the benchmark against which all of these other options could be compared and might make wells on the Clove Creek. Um, or even just some bedrock wells around the, the middle reservoir and Foundry Brook uh, an attractive alternative to rebuilding the upper reservoir.
The, uh, also if the upper reservoir was, was the top reservoir was drained, uh, that could be used for wells too, couldn't it? I mean, if it was snow.
That's correct. You are, you are, you are spot on. Uh, in fact, if I, you know, the way we look for the best locations to drill is we look for places where Mother Nature has identified a weakness in the rock. And by which I mean, the natural ravines are usually indicators of where Mother Nature was able to cut down into rock, usually following a fracture. So once that reservoir, once, if that reservoir was to be drained, putting some wells right in the middle of it, where it is now, could potentially be some very good locations for some, some rock wells. Once again, with the caveat of what I mean by good with rock wells.
Right.
That, that then opens us up to the question of draining the reservoir and the surrounding property owners' objections to now looking at a big mud hole.
Uh, I, yeah. It wouldn't be a mud, it would be a mud hole for about um, a month. Um, you know, there's a, there's a dam that was drained somewhat unexpectedly in Orange County. Um, they thought they were going to do their repair work very quickly and it ended up being a year. Um, and so they had no plans for revegetating the exposed lake bottom. And you can go there now and it is a wonderful meadow. It is, uh, it is just a beautiful spot because mother, all of the seed stock material from the surrounding vegetation that had blown out into the lake and then dropped to the bottom, as soon as it wasn't drowned, it all sprang to life. Within weeks, it was green and within a month and a half, it was a beautiful vegetated meadow uh, at no cost. Um, so it is true that the owner of the shoreline property won't look at water, but they look at mud for very long at all. Um, and um, they might actually pick up some property. I mean, it depends on where the, where the, their parcel lines end.
But doesn't, doesn't the stream that feeds the upper reservoir and then the lower reservoir, the middle reservoir and whatnot, that stream will still continue? So.
It'll be a lovely, it'll be a lovely little stream fol- following the, following the, the low spot. Absolutely. No, you're absolutely right. And it'll flow right into what is today called the middle reservoir or, you know, the, the, the lower of the two upper reservoir. Yeah, it'll, it'll be a, it'll be an attractive little mountain stream where there was a very large body of water. Uh, and, you know, once again, I don't, I can't gauge this, the objections or the pleasures of the, uh, the people who live around it. But uh, often the way to start the discussion is, um, would they like to contribute to uh, the restoration of the dam? And I don't, many of them volunteering.
The good thing about the upper dam is there's only one property that has a house. There's only one.
I, I thought it, I thought it was only one. So the question is, uh, you know, how would they react?
Any other questions from the board? Well, on behalf of the board, thank you, thank you so much. It's uh, really been an education and uh, it really useful information. Uh, a lot to digest and uh, and I think we have some great options now. Sometimes uh, not getting anything done right away, really uh, is to your benefit. I find that a lot in my work. So, uh, sometimes, uh, you know, the, if you wait a bit, uh, options come up and, you know, this, this, it's all very interesting and good stuff. So, thank you guys so much uh, for your work and uh, sure we'll be in touch with you. And Michelle, thank you so much. Uh, it's really, really is a uh, a productive uh, report. Thank you.
Yeah, it's our pleasure. It's been great to work with um, Jason. And also I, I didn't mention earlier, uh, Matt Krug, um, who I don't think is on anymore. But obviously he's been a tremendous help to us through this process. And we're glad that just having these discussions has already yielded greater capacity through the upper reservoir valve. So that's, you know, there's any um, more droughts coming this fall, that'll certainly help with that. And uh, yeah, so um, we hope, I hope this is helpful uh, for the village going forward on these issues. I know that you still are dealing with the DEP connection and you know, what the next steps on the, the upper reservoir repairs, the dam repairs. So, seems that this is timely.
Very timely. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, we'll be uh, continuing on here. Uh, I think that was great. Uh, that, a lot to talk about. I think we should really talk about next step and seeing what it would cost or may, having a proposal maybe from Jason or whoever. We do that, um, to see what it would cost to tap into the uh, Clove Creek or, you know, what, what that actually looks like. I mean, it seems like that would be the best way, but it also seems to me maybe one of the most expensive. But, but as they said, if we're spending four million dollars on a dam, maybe at least we have a benchmark, risk on the go with, so.
Good stuff. There'd be a, there'd be a lot of DEC hurdles that would get expensive and time consuming. Like off the top of my head, that, that's the only drawback to that. And you gotta get a pipe under Route nine also.
You're, you're also the thing, I don't, I think they mentioned in the report, um, but not just now is you're crossing watersheds, you bring water from one watershed to another. So that's a, that's a bit of a hurdle to cross with the DEC.
Right. And from, are you familiar on, is this our way to go besides down nine? I mean, since it's, I, I'm not sure exactly where Clove Creek goes. I'm trying to think. It seems like you'd have to go up to the Highlands, but it wouldn't be close to Valhalla, which is then close, connects right to. It seems like you'd have to go up to the Highlands, but it wouldn't be close to Valhalla, which is then close, connects right to our reservoir system. Is there a way to go through that area, not along nine?
It could, I guess it could. I mean, I'm thinking of, you know, the Clove Creek aquifer, where fish kill beacon, is fish kill already drawing water from that kind of area.
Is that where this, is that where the sand pits are?
Sand and gravel aquifer is, yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, I don't think you'd have to go through Route nine. You could, you could cut through, you know, the Lake Valhalla, if you could get the permissions. But I do, I gather from prior discussions with Jason that if you're, basically, you're taking water from one watershed into another, that's a higher hurdle than if you were staying within the same watershed.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is discussion on developing pandemic operation plan. I just briefly went over this. Has anyone had a chance to look at this?
Yeah. It seems to me that many of the requirements are already in place, that that they evolved over time. And I'm just going to say that Jeff could probably knock a couple of these out, because it's mostly the stuff that he has been doing with the office and the office staff and with the highway department and the water and sewer department. So it seemed to me that this could, I'm not saying it's going to be easy, but I think we've already got much of this.
I I think this was aimed at larger municipalities, too. It doesn't, you know, when you have two people working in your village office. I think it's, I don't think there's much of.
I agree, I read.
I need it. What's that?
I I looked at it also, and I agree with Marie. It's like, I mean, even with, you know, deciding who are essential personnel. If we need the water department, we need the highway department, we need the police. You know, basically, those are essential personnel, and we're pretty much done everything that seems that needs to be. We just have to put it in writing.
Dave, do you want me to reach out and work with Jeff to put this together with Jeff and Larry, Matt and Rosie?
Yeah, thank you. I think it, I think it's fairly, I think it'll be fairly quick. Going over to the second time tonight, I went over, and it just seems like it's, I don't know, it seems like it'll be easy, just another time. Something taking more time. So thank you. That'd be great. Next is Resolution sixteen twenty twenty, authorizing execution of settlement documents. I'm not going to read through the whole thing. Unless do you feel we should, or no?
No, I don't think so.
So I will, I will make a motion. I know this is real, I'll make a motion to to approve the authorization of exec- execution of the settlement documents.
Second.
Michael?
Yep, Mayor Morandi.
Hi.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Vellato?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is the tree removal and tree maintenance RFPs. Is Jen on?
She is. Hey, Jen. Can you hear me?
We can hear you and see you.
Hey. Good, thank you. I just wanted to come on, because I think that the village board needs to approve any RFP before it comes out, before we put it out. So I have it before you. I have two small changes to them. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look them over. But basically, we have a target amount in the grant. And our priority is the removals, because those are the most expensive things. And then whatever we have left in that target amount, we're going to use for pruning of the Main Street, the trees on Main Street between Cedar Street and West Street. And we've prioritized because with the logic that those are the most sort of visible trees, and we've prioritized them. There's a lot of ones, you know, on Lower Main Street and et cetera. So I have two additions. I don't know if you guys want me to tell you those, or if you have any questions for me about these, but.
I have a question about the removals, Jen. Is there any intent to replace?
That is an excellent question. Yes, the, there has been an intent since five years ago, even before the Tree Board formed. Many of these trees have been declining for a long time. So since the Tree Board formed, we've been proactively planting trees in the vicinity of most of this, these trees to hopefully mitigate some of these. For example, Parrot Street has been, has a disproportionate amount of trees being taken down. We've planted, I think, six trees on Parrot Street in the last few years. And I think we're going to plant one more this fall, but that is our, our like unofficial policy. We try to replace ones either before we take them down or afterwards in the general area.
So is the replacement of the, is the replacement covered as part of the proposal?
No. The replacements are occurring on an ad hoc basis, based on private donations, and they're not coming under the grant funding at this time. In the future, I can apply for, that's a separate, this is a tree maintenance grant that we got, and another grant tree planting you could apply for, that's a separate category. So if needed, I, we can do that, but.
Do you, do you have the grant, the contract number for?
Yes, it's really long. I didn't type it in. Do you want me to read it to you?
No, no, no. Does Jeff have, does Jeff have it?
Yes, Jeff, Jeff has it. When I was typing this out, I didn't have it at my fingertips, sorry. So it's like, you know, twenty characters long, so.
Long as Jeff has it.
Marie, should I, can I tell you guys the the two small changes, just so you know what you're approving? On the RFP for the removals, there's the addition of one tree, which is tree number, in our system, it's number two eighty-eight, and it's in front of twenty-one Main Street. It's a sugar maple that's twelve inches, and that tree is, has this year, I think, just completely died during the season. So we're adding that to the list.
Okay.
It's sort of by the, the empanada place on Lower Main Street. It's one of those trees.
Two eleven Maine, two eleven Maine would be.
No, twenty-one Maine, twenty-one. And then the second change is, I showed this to somebody who was a professional on the other RFP for tree maintenance. So we need to add, under scope of work, that all work shall be completed in compliance with ANSI, A N S I, A three hundred standards, which is a industry-wide accepted pruning tree standard. And I'm also going to add that there is a, which I forgot to put in here. There is a list of trees that are marked with specific pruning instructions available at Village Hall. Email Jeff or pick, pick up the printed copy at Village Hall. So those were the two changes there. To just to describe it to the trustees, the problem with putting both of these RFPs out at the same time is that one is contingent on the other. So whatever money we have left after the removals, we will put for the second one. However, the ISA Certified Arborist, which is a higher standard, needs to be supervising the pruning work, and that's a requirement, a DEC requirement. So that was the reason we broke these into two. So for example, a professional licensed insured tree company that doesn't have a certified arborist on staff could bid on the takedowns and the removals, but they would, would not qualify to bid on the pruning work, which is more finicky. And the DEC requires the arborists there. So that's the, the, the reason for two different requests, I guess.
What's the total amount from the grant?
The, the grant itself is forty-nine thousand something, but for this work, I think it's eighteen thousand three hundred is set aside. So we anticipate the first grant to be somewhere between twelve thousand and sixteen thousand. I don't, I don't know. And then the second grant will be a few, you know, we're hoping around $6,000 left for pruning, but we'll just, we'll see what happens. It depends on how competitive, what competitive bids there are.
Jen, where do you, where do you go with these RFPs? Do you put them in the press, or do you have a website that goes?
We, I anticipate putting them on the Tree Advisory Board website and having Jeff blast them out via the list. I don't believe that they have to be published in the legal sections of the papers, but I I can double check on that. And then what really is going to happen is I have a whole list of local tree services and ones we've used before and slightly wider. And I'm just going to send them, I don't know if that's legal, but I was just planning on sending the RFP to everybody that I know, just without bias, to to try and encourage people to apply.
Sounds like a good plan.
And just a little grammatical on both of these, where it says contractual schedule. It says tam to award the contract, and I spoke to Jeff today, it should be going to award the contract on both of them. So he said he would adjust.
Yeah, he, I think he has already. Sorry, obviously, this is cut and paste from something I found, so.
On the front page of the, it says general information, and I guess this is going out. It says on the third line, pedestrian vehicle, should safety be added to that? Or is that just to me, it says maintain pedestrian and vehicle traffic?
Oh, yes, on the removal, yes, safety. Oh, I bet, sorry. Thanks.
I think we have to put, we might have to put this ad in the paper, just to satisfy
Okay.
procurement policy.
I was gonna.
Over a certain amount.
I was going to ask Jeff about that. I think that Michelle said that might be the case. So if that's the case, then we will do that.
Right. The second one might not be needed. It's only a few thousand dollars or under three, something like that.
Right.
First one, because the amount is, you just have to put it in the paper.
Well, and I was going to draw your attention to, the proposals would be due by October nineteenth. And I was hoping that I could vet them, I meeting the Tree Board, could vet them and present it at your October twentieth regular board meeting. I know that that's a quick turnaround time, but the grant funding expires on December sixteenth. So we're trying to get this done by November thirtieth, which is the reason that I'm kind of, it got kind of slowed down for a long time with COVID and all, all these supplies. This was going to happen in the spring and got paused until now. But if you guys don't think that that's possible, it's really, you, you don't have to sift through long bids. It's going to be a blump number with a few itemized lines, so I don't think it's going to be a big deal to look through.
I think it's totally possible, not a problem.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, do you have enough time if we have to get it to the press for a due date of October nineteenth?
I think so. I, that's why we chose that one. I think I can get it. I can possibly get it. Well, I'll double check on that, and I can adjust those dates if needed, but.
And if it's on our website, that also helps. And maybe if we can get even to the papers on their, on their web editions or their internet editions. Things up and satisfy what's needed.
Great.
As always, thank you for your work, Jen, and good luck with this.
Do you guys have to vote to approve it, or is it just okay to? I don't really know. So that's, that's why I put it on the agenda.
Yeah, we can vote to approve it.
Okay.
I'll make a, a motion to to approve the sending out of the RFP for the tree maintenance.
Steve's got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Night.
Night, night.
Lynn, you're up? Oh, no, no, you're not. Hold on. We have one that I kind of snuck in there, or well, yeah, I just came in today for to, for replacement for the seasonal lawn maintenance that was held by Bruce Campbell. Jack Deleco from the Highlands. Not sure if everyone knows him. Quite a few people probably know, applied for the job. And I would like to move that forward tonight. So if there's any questions or discussions, I'd be glad to answer, or if everyone's not comfortable, we don't have to do it tonight. I would like to get a move on it.
So you're gonna make, you're gonna make that motion, Dave?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to hire Jack Deleco, or Giama, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Deleco.
Giacomo.
At the hourly rate of sixteen dollars an hour for the same times that we were, we afforded Bruce for the seasonal help. I believe it goes through October. Last year, I'm not sure if Bruce went into November or not, but whatever the schedule is that was given to Bruce, same would be for this. So I'll make the motion to hire Jack for the position.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Now you're up, Lynn.
Okay, make a motion to approve Bill's batch number fifty-seven forty-eight for a total amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a long list of approvals of minutes. Make a motion to approve minutes from nine fifteen.
I, I have some changes.
Okay.
Okay, under Mayor's remarks. And Fran, this was a, something that you had recommended, and we agreed with. Mayor Morandi expresses personal condolences and those of the entire board to the family of Bruce Campbell.
Anything else?
No.
No.
Good, since we didn't even have a second on that, I will, I'll make another motion, motion to approve the minutes from nine fifteen, the Village Board. As with the changes Marie just spoke of.
I'll second.
The second from Lynn. Any further discussion or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Village Board from nine seventeen. If I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the Village Board of nine twenty-two.
Second.
Second from Marie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And finally, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the Village Board of nine twenty-nine.
Fran, you had a change to that?
I do, I do. Under, under the Halloween on Parrot Street, on the second bullet, the Police Department, it should say will not have sufficient officers. I believe it did say that, and then we changed it, and it needs to say will not have sufficient officers as they had in previous years, and then it goes on.
And then on the second page, under public comment, the word boards plural should be board possessive.
Anything on that? Okay, well, I will make a, a remotion, motion to to move, to approve the Village Board minutes of nine twenty-nine with the, with the changes just discussed.
Second.
Okay, Fran, you got that one.
Second from Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anything else from the board before we will open it to public? Comment, and then whatever time we have left, we will try to do something on the code update. Anything else?
Mike Turtin has a question, it looks like.
Yeah, I just wanted to get to everyone first. Okay, we'll open up to a public, public comment. If you state your name.
Mike Turtin. Hey, Mike. So kind of a two or three-part question based on the Jason proposal tonight. Where, where to from here in terms of all that information they presented and alternatives? And it's great that that valve was actually functional, but are you still going to look at alternatives long term? And then as part of that, does it, does the presentation tonight at all affect the village's efforts to repair the dams and to tap into the Catskill Aqueduct? Or are those just continuing as they have been, which has been basically at a snail's pace, but?
Well, since we really haven't talked to the board after, after receiving this, I would say definitely we're going to still be talking about tapping into the aqueduct. Well, since we really haven't talked to the board after, after receiving this, I would say definitely we're going to still be talking about tapping into the aqueduct. And we're working on that and what hell might freeze over before that happens. So, but we're still following on that. I think it does change a bit on how we're going to look at it. I think we, well, the board's going to have to talk on how we'd like to proceed, but maybe a proposal to see what really would be needed to, to tap into the aqua, the aquifer.
From Clove Creek.
From Clove Creek and see what that would cost. And if that was possible and it's less than $4 million and can supply a, as many gallons as they say it can, then I think it would definitely be something to look into.
Yeah, okay.
And I think also, you know, diverting the water from the Jaycocks, it'll give us a little bit more water. We should discuss, you know, what that would actually entail and what the cost of that would be and whether that's worth doing as kind of a supplement. But it sounds like that's more on the beginning of the seasons and not really going to help towards the end. I'm not sure how that works, but I think we should.
Clarification on the dam repairs. What was going to go ahead first repairs to the lower, like the middle or lower dam or was it the upper?
The only one being discussed in which we got in an engineering report was the, the upper one.
The uppermost dam.
Yeah. Yeah, nothing was discussed on this.
Okay, thank you.
Kathleen Foley has her hand up.
Tell her to put it down.
Put it down, Kathleen.
I thought you were at a meeting.
Yeah. Where is she?
I don't see her name on there.
Neither.
I thought it was Kathleen. She signs in as me, but she's gone now. But Ms. Hawkins has her hand up.
Same.
Go away.
Is Ms. Hawkins there?
Yes, here she comes.
Here she come.
Hey. I'm not though. I'm sitting here. So my, my question to the board is whether or not the board will, I guess it's a question for the board may to consider with council about the limitations represented or, you know, described in the Chazen report about the limitations of backup water. You know, clearly based on their assessment, the village doesn't have enough, sort of doesn't have enough water for kind of, you know, unfettered expansion and continued growth and development. And I know that, you know, when, when the planning board was reviewing the Butterfield development, that represented a lot of additional housing units and residential units. And the plan was approved, et cetera. And this added, added, I think, I don't know, 85 units. I may be wrong. A number of units, but that is an additional tax on our water supply. And of course, that means that any sort of emergency or backup or reserves that are recommended are further taxed. So as we look forward to, you know, the future and future development in the village, is the village going to be speaking with council about adjustments to the code? About taking into consideration limitations of water? I mean, it seems like that's a reasonable gating issue and you're thinking about future development. And I guess it's not a question you need to answer now, but I guess I would ask that you talk to council about how that can be considered when the planning board is looking at development of property.
Is it, is it not currently a consideration for the planning board?
It's not written into the code that that's something that we, we can rely upon. I mean, it's sort of a, it's, it's part of the secret process, right? But, but there's nothing that states very specifically that, hey, the, the planning board can, you know, shall not permit. I mean, I bring this up because a lot of pressure around the development of the old Butterfield Hospital property. And, you know, had it been written into our code that the planning board was obligated to consider the limitations of water supply, that would have been, you know, attraction and a, and a baseline from which to be making decisions, right? So, and I know this, and the seeker, there's a seeker process, but hey, any consultant can, you know, paid for by an applicant can come before the board and make arguments that, hey, there's plenty of water, et cetera, et cetera. So I think Jason, the Jason report really provides us a, an important consciousness raising. I was very surprised to see, to, to read, to, to read that report and see their, their recommendations for the amount of auxiliary water supply that we should have. And considering there's still, there are still properties that are open in the village, specifically Marathon. They can, they can, you know, absorb a lot of development. I'm just wondering if the water supply can can accommodate that. Anyway, just.
Just as in addition to that, as I read through this report, um, the chasing report did take into consideration the full build out of the Butterfield property and an estimate of if Marathon was built out, they estimated that they would be needing the same amount of water as the full build out of Butterfield. So that's included in this as they came up with their numbers.
Oh, yeah, yes. But I, I also, my understanding though, in reading that is that we're still, we still, regardless, we don't have enough backup, right? Right. I don't know. Am I wrong? Did I misread that? I think that the, at the.
Well, we would if we developed the, the well drilling and things like that. That would be sufficient to.
Right.
But we would have to do that infrastructure work first.
Sorry, if, if the lower dam can be fed by the upper dam, which is what was demonstrated, there's the capacity in the upper dam and the capacity in the middle dam and the capacity in the lower dam, which is I think the 80 million gallons that Chazen reports. If the upper dam goes offline, that's a different matter. And the Chazen report, I believe, says that with the middle dam and the lower dam, there is at least a two month supply. We were always faced with that with taking the upper dam offline to repair it. And that was where the aqueduct connection came in to supply additional water to the village during the period of time where the upper dam was offline. So, so I think the numbers that we have to think about are the two month capacity in the middle dam. Sorry, full capacity with all three dams with the upper dam offline. Then we've got a two month capacity in the middle dam and some capacity, I don't remember how many gallons in the lower dam.
Just from my personal experience of living at the, at the, right on that dam, on the only house on the upper dam. The one year, and I'm not, I don't know what year it was, that they emptied the upper dam almost, they almost emptied it. I think they probably dropped it as far as it could go. And the, the middle dam, that was also way down that year. If there was what the amount of use is there is now, I don't think we, I think we would have to tap into New York City. Yeah, we'd have enough capacity.
That's why we're at the, we're at the mercy of nature and rain, which is not a predictable commodity. It's very scary. In terms of, you know, a drought can happen at any time. So, and we would really be, we'd be in a bad place.
I think there were some, I think there were some actions that were taken that, that the relining of the pipes in the village to eliminate a lot of the leakage. I think that has addressed some amount of loss that's, I mean, if you take a look at the, at the daily draw of water versus the water that is metered going into homes and businesses and whatnot, there's some amount of difference between the two, which is attributed, I believe in the report, to some amount of leakage. But the relining of the pipes, which was done, I'm going to say five or more years ago. I think that addressed a lot of the leakage and you may be remembering, I do not remember the drought that you're referring to, but I suspect that we had more leakage at that time than we do now. It's not to say that leakage is zero, but I believe that much of the leakage has been addressed.
Oh, yeah, but the system's so old that that could recur in another way at any time.
And, and, and yes, it could occur and it doesn't matter where your water is coming from. If you're losing water, you're losing water.
Right.
Oh, it does matter where your supply is. It doesn't matter where it's coming from now. But if you don't have a capacity, then you're losing, then it does matter.
If you don't have the capacity, correct. But if, yeah, but if you're losing water, you're losing water somewhere between the reservoir and the, and the spigots in everybody's homes.
Right. I personally, I feel like that even with the build out right now, that we don't have enough capacity. If we hit one of those seasons again, which we have, but we'll see. I would argue with the experts that we have enough right now and we'd be tapping into New York City. But that's just my gut feeling and from, from watching the reservoirs for years. Anyway, to Stephanie's point, if this, if the report could be added somehow, or we could, we should maybe talk and see how that, you know, would affect or how that can be incorporated, or I don't know if it can be or how that's done. But I guess it is a good document to have on hand. Eventual build out.
I agree.
I think Stephanie's recommendation is to modify the village code so that the planning board approval of development is contingent upon the state of the water supply. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Yeah, I'm asking if you would consulting with council for the village to see if that's, if that's something that the village can do.
Are you thinking memoratorium on development?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just asking you to consult with council about, you know, you're in the middle of your code update and I'm asking you to, you know, take into consideration the limits, limited resources as a gating issue to development. You know, the, if they were, you know, you look at the world and there's unfettered developments all around the world. You know, resources be damned and we find ourselves with, you know, people being flooded in, you know, the Gulf area of Texas when there's a, a storm because there isn't enough, you know, drainage or, you know, anyway, so it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to continue building out and putting pressure on existing village resources if they are not there to be used. So.
I agree.
It can only be, I guess our water supply is available to us. Nobody wants to be thirsty. So anyway, yeah, I'm asking you to talk to council about adding that and thanks.
Is that something that the planning board does on a regular basis if they're looking at development? Do they consider the water supply or do we have to instruct them to do that?
No, no, it should, it should be part of the secret process, right? But it's part of the secret process and that whole process can be very, you know, it's very involved and it can be, you know, people can focus on other things. It's not, there isn't a, you know, a specific empirical standard. You know, there's a, our zoning, our zoning board responds to a set of empirical criteria that, you know, people have to present a persuasive argument for each of those criteria for their variance to be awarded. But the planning board doesn't have that. The planning board takes into consideration a constellation of factors. Some are maybe featured more prominently in arguments for or, and, or against. And I think that it's, it's certainly helpful if you can, if the village board can sort of provide the standing boards with starch and structure in the code that allows us to rely on very concrete things. I find that the water supply and the question of how much we have, how much water we have available to us is a concrete thing, right? Some people say, oh, you know, hey, whenever it rains, we get more water. Yay. But we know that the, there is a maximum available to us. And, and this report, to me, this report was consciousness raising. I, I've, I read it with great interest. And.
Well, we have that per chain businesses or whatever, whatever the hell they're called. We don't allow multiple, you know, what are the names of those things? Franchises, those type of things that have more than a certain number of locations, they're not allowed in the village. And that's part of our code, is it not? It would be something similar to that.
Correct.
If you can't develop something because we don't, you have to run it, you know, bottom line is we have X amount of gallons and you have to take the lowest known number of gallons available, which would be during a drought or something and say, well, we can't, we can't supply water to that number of houses if our water is at the lowest point. And that has to kind of be the, the baseline for allowing development. You can't just hope that we'll have enough water because we've had some good years of rain, but that's no guarantee.
Well, and I think we didn't have this study when, when Butterfield went into, you know, when they, when they, their application was going through. And basically I, from what I understand, Greg, you know, did, you know, his calculations had said, yes, it was fine. We could handle it. But with something like this reported, I guess the word was concrete that Stephanie just used. I guess this was something we, you know, I would feel definitely more comfortable with if we had, you know, engineers and professionals that had looked at this and this is the bottom line and where we are, at least we can use this now. Whereas we didn't have that information before. And I think it should be considered. If somebody wants to build out and put 50 houses in or 100 houses, we can say our capacity doesn't, isn't going to hold that. You can do 50 or however.
Right.
Well, I'll give that more, that more thought. And.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Is there anyone else, Michael?
Thanks, board.
I don't see anybody but you chickens.
Well, I don't think we should really get into, into our code with about 20 minutes. 10 minutes. Is there any updates or anything you want to just throw at us, Marie, before, and we won't get into the code itself, but.
No, just our next code review meeting would be when?
I don't think, we weren't going to have a Tuesday, right? So we could have another one next week.
Next Thursday.
We're going to. I'm fine with Thursday, I guess.
I'm good with Thursday.
Yep. And do you want to give a briefing on the NYSARDA and?
Yes, I, I spoke with NYSARDA. They described that we are one of the few remaining projects from 2014. And they have accepted a whole bunch of new projects. And so they are hesitant to extend us further. But they were willing to entertain a 15th month extension for all of the checkpoints from checkpoint 4.0 through the end of the project and the official end of the project is now, I think it's second quarter 2022. They give a, a three month from the end of the project, the official point. To the endpoint. I've sent them and updated, a draft updated com, a contract reflecting all those dates and a document that described the reasons why we were asking for the extension. I know they have received it. My expectation was that they weren't going to take any action on it. And we're going to proceed as we have been.
Hey, thank you for all the.
So let me confirm that the next code meeting is on the 15th, right? Not this coming Thursday, the 15th? Are we talking about this?
Yes, we for Thursday.
Thank you.
Anything else for the board? Oh, if not, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good night all.
Good night.
Night, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Night all.